So today is really the city's opportunity to provide the county with their map and their reasoning behind that. So we won't have a lot of conversation. We will further the conversation on May 19th at one o'clock with a work session at the county. So we will take this information and go to that next step. So appreciate the opportunity to be here and to listen to the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Can you hit break point there and bring up some old facts and history? Share that.
Do you want to do that first or as the presentation goes on?
Sure. And my voice doesn't carry like my cohorts here, but never has. I like, I like dealing with history. And the history of our state and the history of our impact areas when our land use planning was put in. The state put in for cities to have areas of impact around them, areas that are imaginary boundaries, cities put around their city limits as areas to grow into. And and it says, "An area of impact is where growth and development are expected to occur. Areas of impact should be planned for growth and development and should not be used to stop growth. And also areas of impact should be established, modified, or confirmed based on the ability and likelihood of a city or cities to annex lands within that area of impact in the near future." If I were an owner of a city, for example, and I want to grow my city, I want to be able to take care of my infrastructure, you know, we're talking roads, sewer, water, police, fire. If I'm owner of city, what I want to do is stretch out my tax base. And to do that is you annex other areas into the city because that is your tax base. That's your taxpayers. And that's how you grow a city. That's what needs to happen. Here, we haven't seen that happen around City McCall for forty plus years, I believe. And that's, that's how you people make money. That's how you grow the city. That's how you take care of stuff. Which is why I think the state started watching what was going on in the whole state. And they put a little piece in here that says, basically, if you, a quick summary with what the state said, use it or lose it. They want to see cities to grow and grow into areas that will make you more vibrant, make you have more money for the taxpayers to be able to take care of your cities, take care of your sewer systems, your water systems, everything that goes on in a city. And I just wanted to bring that little bit of facts to everybody's mind because that's what we're about. You can't make a mini-city out of an impact area. You have to use it like it was designed to be used. And when the state passes a couple of years ago, it, they let us know this is the way cities are now going to start operating. And that's why we're here having this discussion. And just wanted to give everybody a little history lesson there because that's, that's what we're designed to do. And not to, you know, stop the growth. We need the cities to grow. And it would help all of them, Cascade, Donnelly, you guys, if we can see that happen. Go ahead, Forrest.
Thanks Commissioner Thompson for those remarks and that insight. So we'll kick off the presentation here and I'm just going to give a, a quick overview of what we're going to discuss. And it, it all ties into what you saw in the packet that went out at the end of last week. But first I want to introduce the team that's going to be giving the different parts of this presentation, just so that everybody knows who's speaking and who's been working on this. So we have our city legal counsel, Bill Punkinny, next to the clerk over there. Diane Kushlin, Principal Consultant with Kushlin Associates. And I think this is in order of, of the presentation. We have Megan Moore, Senior Associate Planner from Logan Simpson, which is a environmental and community planning firm. We have Ben Esterlein, GIS Analyst with Logan Simpson. The two of them will be presenting online. And Michelle Grunaveldt, the Community and Economic Development Director. So just to give a quick rundown of the agenda here, just I'll give a, a quick bit of background and some of this also is what Commissioner Thompson touched on. That we'll look at the state statute quickly, what is required of cities and counties. Annexation, the legal counsel will discuss annexation law and how that figures into the state statute on areas of impact. We'll talk about the impact area goals and policies, key goals that the area of impact should be aiming to achieve. Process overview, this is the explanation of the data and analysis that went into the model and the methodology. And then we'll talk about the administration implementation, the, the model of joint governance that the AOI facilitates and the value this brings. And then there will be time for discussion and next steps that, to answer any questions that the commissioners may have for us to receive feedback and provide anything else that you may need in your deliberations. So if you, the next slide, background, I think just quickly, a, a really detailed analysis of why we're here is not necessary. You're familiar with it. That the model we have has been in, in place for about fifty years. There are hundreds of parcels and residents that live in the area of impact and property owners have made investments and development decisions based on this framework. And the city and county have invested staff time and taxpayer resources into establishment and administration of this framework over many years. There have been two joint meetings, one in September twenty twenty four and one most recently in March. And we agreed at the most recent meeting that the next steps would be for the city to present a map for consideration. Objectives. I think looking at the state statute, the overarching goal is for us to work together to meet the requirements on the goals and policies, I think ideally to have a common understanding and agreement of, of what the, the area of impact does and how, and how it, how it operates in a way that benefits everybody. And then we'll spend quite a bit of time going through this methodology and analysis and so that you all can see and talk about how the criteria from the state statute were incorporated and considered. And then discussion of the administration and implementation of the area of impact, which are as important, if not more than the boundary itself. And then time for us to receive feedback and discuss that with you. So with that, I think we can move on to the next section unless there are any questions.
Went through before, so we're all, you know, pretty familiar with it, so we don't have to dig clear into the weeds unless there's no information hasn't been shared yet.
I think it'll be at a, a pretty high level, so.
Council members and commissioners, Bill Punkinny, City Attorney's Office. And I was asked to give just a short overview of some of the statutes that are implicated in this meeting and to, to answer any questions if there, if there are any, to really. The Commissioner Moppen's point, I think we can cut right to the chase in terms of the section by Idaho code under which we're, we're beginning to operate, which is sixty seven, sixty five, twenty six, which the legislature created various roles for counties and cities in establishing the area of city impact. And if you jump right to subsection four, it talks about provisions applicable to the area of impact. And it says, "In defining the area of impact or in modifying or confirming the existing area of impact, the criteria set forth in this subsection shall be considered." So it's not just one criteria and it doesn't, and it doesn't provide us a mechanism for weighing these criteria, but it provides us with five enumerated criteria. One is the anticipated commercial and residential growth. Two is geographic factors. Three is transportation, infrastructure and systems, including connectivity or areas where municipal or public sewer and water are expected to be provided within five years and five other public service district boundaries.
Bill, can I ask a question really quick?
Certainly.
Yeah, when you're stating those five, would you put an and inside of those or an or? I mean, these five criteria all need to be met or individually?
So after four, there is an and, so I would say that's inclusive, not exclusive. To your point, I think that all, all five should be weighed. In addition to, in the legislature's infinite wisdom, there's a few more factors that you consider. So to the commissioner's point, it says that in addition to the criteria set forth above, an area of impact shall not exceed the areas that are very likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years. And then it shall not exceed more than two miles with some small exceptions to that outside of city limits. So I think, and apropos the commissioner's comments on annexation and focusing on that annexation piece, we wanted to bring some clarity for this meeting and for purposes of both the council and the county commissioners, what the process for annexation looks like, what's available to the city and what's not, because that's something that both, both groups will have to weigh in determining that area of city impact. And again, we're looking at areas that are very likely to be annexed. So what does that mean? What does it mean to annex an area? Bessie, Joe, if you could advance the slides or whoever's on that. Thank you. So cities have a, a very limited scope of when annexations can occur. And I realize that this is probably not something that the commit, it comes up for the commissioners every day and frankly, since some changes to the statute in the last year or two, it's not something that comes up super frequently for cities in most contexts. So pursuant to Idaho Code fifty two, twenty two, it talks about basically two, two scenarios under which land may be annexed into the city. The first is initiated by the city and the second is initiated by the landowners. And so I put into these slides and I'm not going to belabor the whole thing. The first slide is the requirements for annexation when initiated by the city. And you can see that there's a significant and somewhat tortuous process of notice, public hearings and other physical requirements such as the land has to be contiguous or surrounded. And there has to be publications and written notice to all implicated landowners with, with certain very specific notice provisions about ability to consent and not consent and what consent means. Also, there has to be an adaption of an annexation plan and the next slide says what that is, but the most important point is the very bottom one on this slide. It says, "Annexation is available if landowners representing sixty percent of the parcels and fifty percent of the area to be annexed give voluntary written explicit consent recorded with the county." So the annexation process for properties to get into a city is really driven almost primarily by landowners' desire and interest in being in the city. And that's borne out by the notice, the process, and then also the requirements for annexing a property into the city. In addition to that, there are significant planning requirements. And so if we go to the next slide, it identifies what the annexation plan must include. And I'm not going to belabor this point, but suffice it to say, suffice it to say that there's a significant amount of planning that has to go into an annexation when it is initiated by the city. The next process and the more common process for annexations, particularly in this, with the city of McCall and, and really across the cities that I represent is on the next slide and that's the owner initiated. So if we can go to the next slide. And this one is the far more common and the more likely to occur, which is where all landowners have requested annexation or given consent or where implied consent has been given, the city can move forward with comp plan amendment and zoning and basically with the annexation. So there's a, and then there's some limitations onto that as well, but basically the legislature has spoken that it's very important that you get consent from landowners in the instance of annexations and typically those annexations are driven by property owners themselves. So we wanted to focus in on that. We wanted to give the commissioners some information on that. Maybe you don't see annexations every day. I don't know why you would because the statute applies to the cities. Are there any questions that you have about either of the statutes?
I guess one question that was raised to me is, so if I live in a subdivision and I am on the far end of this subdivision and I'm not in, but my neighbors are contiguous on the side of the subdivision. Is this incumbent upon an HOA to bring in the entire subdivision or is individual parcels within a subdivision then able to annex in and would not require the entire subdivision?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Commissioner Moppen. I think it can be either. But so if you are not a contiguous parcel, the, the area to be annexed would have to be contiguous to the city. So if it's defined in the area to be annexed, then yeah, you could be included in that. But again, it would be subject to significant notice, public hearing, publication, and then again, the sixty percent of parcels and fifty percent of area to be annexed would also have to agree.
But all of the neighbors would have to agree to your place, basically. I mean, if there's six homes between you and the contiguous parcel, all of those owners would have to agree to also be annexed.
It, it's the sixty, pardon me, it's the, I didn't mean to interrupt. It's the sixty percent of parcels and fifty percent of owners. That's what the statute requires.
They put you in the corner this time. He was hurrying.
So if there's no further questions, that's it for me.
It's not this time. We will have a public hearing, but this is not one of them, so. But you can drop us a note and I'll send us an email if you have questions that you'd like answered. We will find you.
Well, a little bit of just a reminder of your current boundaries that are in place. Of course, what's popped up on the screen there is the City of McCall boundary in white. And then in gold, you've got the current area of impact boundary. What we wanted to point out as part of this is the study area boundary that's shown in red. And that study area boundary is reliant on that two-mile buffer that's called out in the state statutes. So the two-mile buffer from.
Megan, before you go on, can I ask a really quick question?
Of course.
On the two miles, did you include all of Ponderosa Park in that or just the Cokney Cove?
Oh, and that one I might have to lean specifically on, on Ben or Michelle.
I'm curious.
As to that specific area.
I believe there's a very small parcel that's just outside of it on the northern end, but most of Ponderosa Park is in that two-mile boundary.
So what was your question?
So where's the, where does it start, the two mile? Yeah. So where was our touch point to, to do that two-mile boundary?
I think it's the existing city boundary.
It's the existing city limit. So Ponderosa State Park will, is in the process of going through an annexation. So that was not included in this, in the study area as the starting point for the two miles.
Okay, just Cokney Cove's in that conversation with State Park. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct at this point. Yeah.
And I'll say the, the reason for the difference between, of course, the blue two-mile boundary, which is pretty rounded, right? And it is, as Michelle said, just a two-mile buffer on that existing city boundary. The red pulls in all those parcels that that boundary crosses. So state statute now says that you can't split parcels of which the existing AOI does. So instead of, of doing that, this has expanded to include all of those parcels that that blue boundary touches.
I have further questions, while we.
Yep, Diane, go ahead. Go ahead. You were next, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's Diane Kushlin with Kushlin Associates. And I was asked to just provide a little bit of background in terms of the goals and policies for this project because we wanted some guiding direction and that was one of the first things that we did. And we were informed in those goals and policies by some of the history that we've already had on the AII, AOI, including the, the meetings that you've had prior to this and your request for proposal from the city. And all of our comprehensive plan and master planning that's been done has provided a lot of direction for those goals and policies. The other thing that we wanted to do is provide a technical analysis of the parameters that are established in state law. And in doing that, we had a very quick turnaround with Logan Simpson. And there wasn't the opportunity for public input that you typically would have in a planning program. So wanted to make that very clear that this is a data-driven analysis and really doesn't have that qualifying that you usually get with public engagement. So the, there's four goals and you've probably read them in the report. The first one is obviously to comply with the statutory requirements under state law. And as Bill has already mentioned, there's some specific criteria contained within that that we need to comply with. And then the second objective there is to align the, the project with the comprehensive plan and the the master plans, acknowledging that the city fully intends to go through a major plan update within the next year or so, which would fully engage the community as, that is required by state law and as, and is an ethic of this, of the city. The second goal, the second goal is to ensure that we coordinate and collaborate with predictable growth management and the, the first objective there is to maintain continuity as much as possible within the area of impact. We, that, that, we feel that's important in terms of the expectations of the people who have been living there and who want certainty in terms of protecting their property rights. The city is also interested in ensuring that they have ability to accommodate and prepare for population, employment growth. And you'll see in the analysis that there was a lot of attention paid to that factor. And then continue to ensure that there's consistency between the planning documents of the city and the county and to coordinate and advance toward the land use goals that have been adopted by both agencies. And then number four is to ensure there's a choice in developing in the city or county that continues to be in accordance with the county's vision as well. Goal three is to strengthen our, the intergovernmental relationship between the city and the county and continue the collaboration that you've undertaken over the last year and a half. And then to, in that process, to better clarify the roles and relationships between the city and the county in terms of the AOI. There's been a number of comments made about the administration of the AOI and some significant issues that this process is intending to help resolve. And that, that should all be tied together through an updated intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. And then goal four is certainly the city and the county have both invested a lot in planning and infrastructure. Also our service, other service providers that support the city in the county area. And so we want to make sure that we leverage those investments as much as possible as, as we look toward the, toward the future. So the goals and policies. Is there any questions about any of those? We presented those to the council, as you probably know, at the joint meeting and they were accepted. So I, before, yes, sir.
So in creating a model, I keep hearing about all of the factors that went into creating the model, but I, I have no knowledge of what those factors are. So there was some, there's a, there was a statement that there was like twenty-four factors that went into this modeling. So anyways, do any kind of planning know that it, a model will come out with the information you put into it? And so I'm curious, were you guys made aware what those twenty-four factors were that went into this model or how was this model designed? What information was fed in that we didn't get that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we did discuss in detail the, the twenty-four factors that were used and how they were applied. And I think that Logan Simpson will explain that when they go through.
So I, I'm going to introduce or hand it over to Logan Simpson and before I do, I just wanted to use a, an old style, old-fashioned visual aid, which is this book. And for the last week, my husband and I have been clearing out our office and our home for our intended move to Valley County full-time. And this book rose to the top of my throwing out save, throwing out save decisions. And this book is called Design with Nature by In McCarry. It was published in nineteen sixty-nine. And it goes through a process of taking attributes of land and mapping them and then overlaying all those mapped attributes in a way to determine the suitability of land for all variety of things, from land conservation to big, huge land development. Some of our famous big new towns in this country were developed with this process. And as, as for me, as a planner for fifty years, you know, I think about the process in nineteen sixty-nine of doing that kind of mapping. It was very labor-intensive. And look at us today, within six weeks, Logan and Simpson, through the, to me, magic of GIS systems have been able to put all these factors together in a way that we can understand. And hopefully you'll appreciate the work that's been done in that. And it's just amazing that it's been done so quickly and so effectively. So I'll pass it on then to Megan and Ben.
That was a great introduction, Diane. I think, I think he was the one that first introduced kind of that overlay technique, right? Which is what we've gotten into with the mapping component. And Commissioner Moppen, I think it was asked, you know, what are those criteria that we used? And we'll talk about that in a second. But first, just the methodology behind kind of the, the green maps that you'll see as we go through. First was, was just gathering data. So, you know, taking a look at the state statutes and metrics, pulling the data that was available to us. The second piece was starting to refine that data and apply weights to some of the criteria in order to overlay these maps. And the third of it, third phase of this was really to, to take a look at that overlay, which helped us define suitability and created those boundary options that you see in your packet. A little bit more detail on that and we'll keep going down these different levels. First, just taking a look at your population projections. It was mentioned that we took a look at both population and employment, just to understand better where that growth could be accommodated, where it could go. Taking a look at city data, so everything from your roadways to topographic concerns, to view sheds, et cetera. And then just, just making sure that we're aligning with the state statute with those requirements. The second piece is that we took the data that we could track down from the city and spatially defined it, but we also organized those into those five state statute categories that I think it was Mike mentioned early on. So the water and sewer component, the transportation component, public, other public services, anticipated growth and geographic factors. And then the third piece of this was taking those, taking all of the maps. So there's twenty-four maps. I think you have them all. So there's 24 maps. I think you have them all in your packet. Talk a little bit about the details behind each of those. Overlaying them first into each of those five categories, water, sewer, geographic factors, et cetera. And then second, taking all of those five categories and then kind of smashing them together to get the overall suitability analysis map, which led into that data-driven AOI boundary. The growth projections, I won't get into all the detail here. You've got a much more robust analysis in each of your packets. But know that we took, took the data from building permit data, from ACS data, and tracked, created three different projection options. And all of this was looking at both seasonal housing, permanent housing, and overnight visitors, trying to identify what that growth looks like. Came up with a low, medium, and high projection for each of those. And for the purposes of the mapping analysis, the spatial analysis basically used that middle-of-the-line projection to help allocate where growth could be accommodated within, within the AOI. And then this is, this is where we can talk about what those 24 different criteria are. So again, organized by those five state statute categories up at the top. Underneath in those boxes are all of the map layouts, the data that was looked at in your packets. So all together, I won't go through everyone, but it, but it took a look at everything from things identified in the McCall Area Comprehensive Plan, land under conservation easements, to shoreline-adjacent parcels, view sheds, to public service kind of boundaries. So looking at fire drive time, parks, recreation facilities, transportation infrastructure, so taking a look at your existing roadways, your major roads, scenic gateways and corridors, taking a look at the airport overlay zones. And then the last two pieces, tying in the sewer service boundaries and water service boundaries. So again, all of these kind of stacked together to form five consolidated maps, and then all five maps consolidated into one suitability.
Awesome. And so I'm just going to walk you through a little bit more about kind of how the modeling process has worked throughout this process. And so, again, as Megan just mentioned, there's those 24 sets of criteria that were just outlined on that previous slide. And so they were all thrown onto their each individual map, which you're seeing on screen and would see in your packets. And so just to go into a little bit more detail about what this model is doing is it's taking the parcels in that study area. So again, wherever that two-mile buffer intersects parcels from the city boundary is that study area. Taking those parcels, and then each parcel gets a score based on what the weight of each of these criteria are. So for example, if a parcel is in one of the consultation boundaries for, say, from an arborist or a public service, it would get that scored point. And so what happens when we take all of those criterias that have all their individual scores and lay them on top of the other parcels? We then get those five state statute overlay maps. So we're going to show you a couple of green maps that kind of show the general suitability. And I'm going to try to break down each one individually and then show what kind of happens when you, when you push them all together to kind of get that overall suitability map for all five state statutes combined. So for the first one, anticipated commercial and residential growth, what you're seeing is in the lighter green, so that lightest green on the map is what is lower suitability. That kind of medium green is that moderate suitability, and the darker green being the higher suitability. So for example, for anticipated commercial residential growth, what you're seeing from the eight criteria that went into that state statute category, a lot of it is emphasizing around the current McCall boundary, which makes sense, where residential and commercial growth would be predicted to grow, where certain boundaries were called out from the previous comprehensive plan in 2018 for McCall. So priority areas, potential considerations for annexations, et cetera. And then for geographic factors, there was.
Stop for a minute for questions? I don't know if you guys have questions, but I'm still a little confused on, on this process. So I want clarity before we get through this portion. So you are giving points in each one of these five areas. So if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, like public services, police response time, service areas, calls outside the city boundaries. So what you did was take a, a blob and put over that, like an overlay zone. And if, if the police had ever gone to these parcels, they were given a certain number?
Correct.
Or like.
Criterias.
Okay, so parks. There aren't parks outside city boundaries. So how does that impact the AOI? Or fire EMS drive time, those are separate districts. So what you're telling me in that, like the fire and EMS, you took that overlay district and put it upon the AOI and gave that a rating? Same thing with water and sewer?
Correct, yes. And so some of the, oh, sorry.
Sewer doesn't go into the AOI at this point, and the water, I'm not certain the water does, so I need clarity on that. But I'm just trying to figure out how those ratings came about. Do you guys understand the point structure? Am I missing it?
No, this is confusing.
Okay. Do you guys have a question?
I can try to explain just a little bit more on some of those points you've just made to try to add some clarification to that process. And I apologize, it is a lot and it is confusing.
And Ben, sorry, Ben, this is Michelle. It might be useful just to use like an example, like Sherry listed off several examples, so you could pull up those individual layers so that they can see how the data feeds into the overall map.
Yeah, Megan.
You don't, outside the city, I don't.
Yeah, they can kind of just run through some of those, just as examples, and then you give the sense, and then if you have specific questions, they can take it. We just didn't want to.
That'd be great. I just want to understand the modeling, how these numbers came up, so.
Yeah, thank you for your question. So Megan, if you can go back just to start with the water service boundary. You're correct in those assumptions. So what we did, what we wanted to make sure we were doing with this modeling process is to not reinvent the wheel and build upon planning that's been done to date in Valley County and in the city of McCall. So we were looking through previous plans that have been approved and adopted, such as the McCall Water System Master Plan, and tried to take layers that helped us anticipate, you know, certain criteria under, again, those five state statutes. So for example, for, for the water service boundary in the McCall Water System Master Plan, there are three layers from one of the maps and analysis that was done in that plan, showing the current service water boundary, which is in that darkest blue. So all within the city. Thanks for the, the red dot. And then in the lighter blue is a five-year water service boundary. So from, again, extending five years out, and so this was also back in 2018. So you know, maybe a little bit outdated. But then in the lighter blue, you have a 20-year water service boundary. So each criteria, just to get a little bit more into it too, could either have a score of one to five. So each of these, based on the importance of what that does for a reflection of an area of impact suitability. So for example, the water service boundary has a score of five, because that is needed if, if McCall is servicing parcels water. That is one of the higher criteria, higher suitability, because that service is going to that parcel. So the assumption here was made then, if it's in a five-year service boundary, it would get a lower score. If it was in, if it's currently being served, it would get the highest score at five. If it could be served in five years, you'd get a middle score of three. And then if it could be anticipated to potentially serve in a 20-year time service frame, it would get a score of one, just because it's, it's right around in the future. Does that make a little bit more sense for this criteria?
Yes, thank you. That clarifies it. Do you guys have further questions on that? Okay, thank you. Much, much more clear to me.
Yeah, and then Ben can maybe use the example of maybe like McCall Fire and EMS. Even though it's a different taxing district, it's part of the public service criteria of the state statute. And then they can show you kind of how that analysis was done too. I just think that one's interesting, because it's not exactly a city service, but it's still a public service.
Boundaries, though.
Exactly. And they can show you how they did that. Do you have that one available?
We do. I'm trying to find it, though. That's not it.
And while Megan's looking, oh, perfect. So this one was a little bit of interest, of an interesting analysis, because one, the fire districts are very big. So if we were trying to score those, we kind of would cover every single parcel in some fashion in our study area. And so we actually talked with the fire department, and we were kind of figuring out of what's a, what's a way to kind of represent, you know, a general service. And again, you know, this, this is, this differs a lot between different services and different entities. But for this one, we kind of came up with a six-minute drive time to McCall Fire Station as kind of a general service area of where people could get to that, you know, in a relatively efficient amount of time, considering, you know, the, the service that fire and EMS provides to residents. And so for this one, what this, this was a little bit of a separate modeling process, and I, and I don't want to confuse anyone anymore, so I apologize. But essentially, it took the point of the fire station, which you can see in the middle of that map, that little red dot, and it predicted an average drive time of six minutes following the roads and taking into account the speed of the road and the classification of the road. So as you can see, that polygon is kind of weird and really shoots down Highway 55. That's because it is a, it's a, it's a larger road in terms of a higher speed limit, more traffic, so you could travel faster on that. So essentially, this was just giving us a general boundary of potentially areas of service that people could get to that fire station in six minutes. So that was kind of the modeling for this one. And then just to quickly counter that one before I, I kind of asked if that made sense, is for the police one, we got points of incident calls that were responded to in McCall and in the general county. And so that one, we were able to create more of just a general boundary, as you're seeing on screen, of where that kind of covers. So again, where McCall police are kind of receiving those incident calls and to kind of create a general area of where they're actually, you know, servicing or kind of responding to outside of just McCall's city limits.
And just to clarify for this one, obviously, McCall PD has jurisdiction within the city limits itself, but they often serve in an assistance role to the sheriff's office. And so, so that's, so this polygon also in the impact area represents those assistance calls. They're not necessarily the first responder on the scene. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions on criteria or any of the maps we just covered?
I think we got it, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the questions. So moving on to kind of geographic factors, this one just had two criteria. And so one of those was shoreline parcels, and the other one was view shed analysis. And so that view shed analysis took the center of the lake, and based on topography surrounding, did an analysis, you know, wanting to preserve those view sheds of higher up if you're on the lake enjoying recreating. And so that one, you'll see the greens are around the lake, obviously, because again, from a geographic factors perspective, again, under state statute, those are the areas that would pop up or be more suitable from that, that state statute. Public services had six criteria, so again, outlined in that packet. This one is kind of more of a broad suitability coverage. You know, you're seeing a lot, again, kind of closer to McCall City and going down Highway 55. That looked at certain things, in addition to fire and EMS and the police response times are kind of service areas. Who in the county was using the library, so looking at that as well. In addition to parks and recreation facilities, you brought up a correct point that, yes, they are all in the city of McCall. So we did a quarter-mile buffer, kind of assuming a 10-minute walk around smaller parks. And then the larger parks got a half-mile buffer, so being more towards a 15-minute walk, and seeing if those polygons or buffers kind of as general service areas got any parcels kind of that were contiguous to city limits and just outside where people may be going and experiencing, enjoying those amenities. And then there's two more state statutes that we'll cover before showing at the overall suitability map. So we have transportation, infrastructure, and systems. So this one took some layers from, again, the comprehensive plan, but also the transportation master plan. So looking at scenic corridors, major roads that would see investment or traffic or new investment, gateways, things of that nature. And so that one, again, kind of highlights some of those more major roads that were classified in the McCall Transportation Master Plan, being arterials and collectors. And so again, seeing a lot of the scenic corridors are why those greener areas are kind of going up around the lake. And then kind of, again, near the airport and Highway 55, those major roads and gateways to the city, also showing up as kind of that darker green. And then our last one is just two criteria for areas where municipal or public sewer and water are expected to be provided or served within five years. And so again, those are taking those five service boundaries from the Water Systems Master Plan. So current service, five-year service, 20-year service, and then also the sewer boundary as well. And so, yes, I'll stop for questions.
Let's talk about the sewer for just a minute. So the dark green on that one, to the south, I mean, is sewer in that area right now? Because my understanding, and Jeff's in the room, you can help clarify that, but that they are not going outside their current footprint. So that dark green includes sewer? Or in the water infrastructure plan to go in that dark green area right now? Explain that one to me.
Yeah, so for this one, the, the sewer map would be extending and adding color to the top right. And so those parcels, it extends a little bit outside of the city along the shorelines. So that's where the green would be extending there. And then there'd be some additional green towards the south, based on the contiguous parcels to the water service boundaries and city limits. But those also would be in that five and 20-year timeline service.
But just water, not sewer?
Correct.
And is the water, also transportation plan shows that that goes to that area?
Yeah, the data was from the water master plan.
Hey, that's all the questions for now.
And so our final process within all this modeling, again, each five, or the five state statutes individually have their own suitability overlay, as we just went over. Then we added all those up, so aggregated just all those parcels together and their respective scores to get this overall suitability map, which you see on the far right. And so this leads us to the conversation today, or where we would like to start our conversation, of a data-driven area of impact boundary. So as Diane mentioned, this is completely data-driven. We took kind of the emotions out of this, because we just looked at the five state statute criteria, what made sense for the factors to go into that. And then out of that came this AOI data-driven boundary. If we can go to that slide, Megan. It might be a little bit delayed, because we do have a couple animations on that slide just to kind of help tell the story of what actually is changing from the previous AOI boundary and kind of how this new data-driven one came to fruition. So as you can see, just from an overall suitability standpoint, again, those darker greens kind of being closer to the city and mostly to the south, and then a lot of general kind of darker greens kind of along those shoreline parcels that extend north, east, and west. But right now, we're going to click through. You'll see on the left of the screen, seven modifications. And so the first one that just showed on the screen, the red hatching, is a really large Idaho IDL parcel. So Idaho Department of Land owns that parcel. And so why this parcel is in this boundary, again, is because this two-mile buffer intersect, intersects that parcel. So it all is included. And according to state statute, you cannot divide parcels. Any questions on that first one? So that would be an expansion. And I will point out, sorry, the dashed black line on this map, again, is that previous area of impact outlined in the McCall Comprehensive Plan. And the dashed blue line, which you'll see in your packet, is the modified data-driven area of impact boundary. And so.
Tell me about the east side of the lake, so the IDL grounds. So if I put a two mile marker on that, I am getting maybe to parcel G. Can you give me some input on which parcel that goes to? Because those are individualized parcels. And I'm not even getting on that east side. When you barely touch.
Would, sorry, can you repeat the question? Apologies.
So when I put a measurement tool on, on R G S map from Coconico to an IDL parcel, I mean, I barely touched the southern end of those IDL parcels.
The ones in the red hatching?
Yes.
Megan, if you go back to the initial map that showed the three boundaries, you can see from the city boundary, it's kind of that top if, with the red laser, that blue line kind of cuts in half that eastern, that eastern parcel, which inevitably takes up all those top two ones, because that is one big parcel from the Valley County parcels that we, we've been using for modeling. So from my understanding, from a data perspective, that all is one big IDL parcel. Do you see that differently?
That's not the way, the way IDL has been speaking to the county for the last five years. They have parcel, different parcel numbers on all of those. And their plan to sell those are all based on those parcel ID numbers. So E, F, G, H, I, J, L are all ones that go around the lake. So I've never, I guess, thought of them as one parcel because they have not presented them as one parcel.
And I will also add, there are a couple exclusions and there, and if we go back to the other map, sorry to jump around, just to kind of highlight those, because that might also help tell a little bit of the story to the north. Because there are parcels, these black ones, that would be excluded from this data driven boundary. And so those areas would not be in the area of impact because they do not lie within that two mile boundary or are intersected.
Yeah.
But again, those red hatching, at least from the parcel data that we've been working with, is one big giant parcel. So I'm not sure if there's a little bit of a distinction between the ones in black and that red, or if we're still maybe having a, some discrepancy on that really big IDL parcel that's shown in the red hatching.
We will have to have that conversation.
Yeah, and maybe just another clarification. The boundary of two miles is from the edge of city limits. So the way that the model works is it, it's not going, I think you mentioned Coconico in the state park. You would look at the edge of the gray area in the city limits and then project two miles out.
Gotcha.
So maybe that helps clarify a little bit.
That's basically present rim right now, correct? That's correct. Okay, I will work on that because yes, I was taking it from Coconico because that was my understanding. That still only gets us to that lower parcel. We'll have to have a conversation around the way that IDL is breaking up those parcels. We've been given definitely different parcels. Okay, thank you for.
Are you talking about the parcel ladders that they used in their?
All the stuff that they're doing, because they're selling all of those parcels separately. They have individual plans for each one of those parcels. So they're not identifying it as one parcel. They're identifying separate parcels.
Maybe we need some clarity on that, if there's something going on with the state that we're not aware of. Versus, were they using those as parcel, parcel G, et cetera, as proposed? Were these are, were, are they actually parcels from a, which we should be, get that data?
Yeah, that's a good question, Mike. I just know that parcel G is up for sale before parcel E or H. So they have segregated that out somehow, whether that's a legal description, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think Ben, you said that your data came from Valley County records of parcel ownership, right? So, I mean, I don't know, you know, in the PELS plan, if they just split those parcels up based on just their thoughts of how they might want to dispose of them or versus, you know, do something else with them or something like that. But I think that the data that Ben uses, what I'm, I'm hearing was that in the county records, that whole thing is owned by IDL and it's not split up into parcels.
And that's what it shows as I'm looking at the G I S. So as I'm looking at the Valley County assessment G I S, it shows that parcel that where the, the hat, the red hatching is, that's all part of that one big parcel. So if we need clarity on that, then we'll get clarity on that. Good questions. Okay, Ben?
Yep, thank you. Appreciate the discussion, the questions. To keep moving, the third point on this slide is another exclusion. So that is taking out the white cloud subdivision, which you'll notice is at the southwest section of the city. This was also identified in the previous comprehensive plan is just a place to exclude. And I will also mention that red boundary you see to the west is the Red Ridge Boundary Development Proposal that extends into the adjacent county as well. We just wanted to highlight that as well, just that, you know, there's no suitability covered there. But also just wanted to kind of show how that matches up against the current area of impact and the, and McCall city limits within our study area. But more just for reference than anything else. Number four excludes, again, another small area on the southeastern corner this time. Again, another place or an area that was included in the previous comprehensive plan to exclude as a modification for the area of impact. And then number five is an expansion again, again, relating back to the comprehensive plan was in addition at the southeast corner again, but just a little bit higher this time. And then number six modifies the eastern edge. And so what this one really does is kind of similar to the red hatching is McCall, the previous area of impact splits parcels moving along the eastern boundary. And where you're seeing that blue hatching for number six is where those, it now follows the parcel lines along that area. So that was why that one was just added to, again, be in compliance with state statute to not split parcels. And then number seven is our last one. This expands the boundary south to Johnson Lane. And again, is another addition for this data driven A O I because there was a lot of higher suitability from our analysis in the southern region, especially in relation to growth residential and commercial. And so I do want to just mention again, this is kind of where we really want to open up and kind of start the conversation. But we do want to get through the rest of the presentation. Michelle's going to talk about implementation next, but then we will jump back to this map. But before we go to implementation, happy to answer just any more questions before we, again, have that greater discussion in a little bit.
I don't have any right now.
Okay, this is the last portion of the presentation. And then all of you will have an opportunity to ask any questions and have any discussion. As everyone's aware, I think the task in front of us is a boundary map because we, in order to come into compliance by the end of the year, we need to have that. But we felt like it was important to talk about the model for administration, planning and decision making. Because ultimately this impacts the people who live there. And so it kind of doesn't matter who's managing it, if it's the city or the county. I think ultimately the goal is to serve our public in the best way possible. So really, I, one, just one comment about all of this is I think that the McCall impact area is a unique place within Valley County. And as you've heard, a lot of collaboration and coordination and planning has occurred in this area over the last 50 years or so. And, and I think that it's important to note that it, McCall area is unique and it's not by accident. It's been very intentional. I think especially in the last 20 years, we've worked really closely with the residents within the impact area to develop comprehensive plans with, that both the city and the county have adopted. And so we often refer to this whole area as McCall area. So I mean, interestingly enough, there's a lot of residents who live in McCall area who think they're in the city of McCall because, because of the similar regulatory and planning that has occurred. And I guess one thing that we learned in this analysis is that, you know, I think the city does provide a lot of services outside of its boundary. And so, so really having that joint comprehensive plan, which has a 20 year planning horizon, that's actually kind of on the shorter end of a planning horizon. But I think that's really important because we have to plan, you know, one year out, five years out, 20 years out, 50 years out, because the decisions that are made today will ultimately impact the future of this whole region. And so, so really, the comp plan is what guides all of the development, redevelopment program projects, budgets and services. As mentioned earlier, it helps with other service providers. It helps the residents in terms of, and even people looking at property and who are interested in purchasing property have some certainty about what they're buying into. As mentioned, we have similar codes that the, that the county commissioners have adopted in the past that are similar to the city codes. And this is just related to planning and zoning and subdivision and development. I will also add that the, we've, basically the, the area of impact is administered by our building official and that's been really beneficial in, in terms of proximity. I mean, it's not uncommon for our building official, John Powell, to get a call that says, okay, I've got a concrete truck that's ready to arrive and he can respond really quickly. It also then allows that staff person to be familiar with kind of the planning that's occurred and make sure that projects are happening according to how they were approved. And making sure those conditions of, of approval are getting implemented accordingly. So I will mention that we do have a joint planning and zoning commission. This is sort of a, a unique arrangement, but it works and has worked really well. Because basically the people who serve on the joint commission actually live within the jurisdictions. And so right now, the composition which could change is there's four appointed by the city council and three appointed by the county commissioners. And they really become the expert for this area as it relates to planning and zoning. And as all of you know, a lot of information gets vetted at the planning and zoning commission level, both the joint commission and your Valley County Commission before you get that recommendation. So you want to make sure that the commission really understands and is familiar with kind of regulations and actually like what's on the ground. So in terms of legal issues, I think in the past, Valley County didn't have an attorney that was quite as involved in land use decisions. So we often deferred kind of to our city legal. And then we would coordinate with the county as it related to code enforcement or if there was any questions. I will note that Valley County has not received any legal challenges in the last 20 years within the impact area. And there've actually been kind of very few appeals. I think many of the, or a few of those have happened more recently. But I do think we had a really good meeting between staff, the mayor and Commissioner Mopin talking about some of the concerns that the county has related to legal issues. And I think that there's some, some ways on moving forward together and making sure that the county feels comfortable and is represented at meetings and more involved in the land use process. So we have a model in place. I think one of the things that we acknowledge is that there's always opportunities to make it better. And so we're, we're open and happy to, to look at all kinds of things. The other thing is engineering. In the past, our city engineer did engineering reviews. So that's things like coordinating with Valley County Street or Road, Road Department. All the stormwater reviews that are really critical for our shoreline and lakefront properties and riverfront properties and some other kind of projects like that. I think that's something that we could look at in the future because I know now Valley County has an in-house engineer. I talked a little bit about building plan review and inspection and the coordination that occurs there. And then ultimately, I think the most important thing is that this is really a process to sort of evaluate what's working and what's not working. And then clearly outline how we want it to work in the future. And that really can be memorialized in an interagents or an intergovernmental agreement. That way everyone can be really clear and feel comfortable with kind of process procedures, how we're going to deal with things. And I think, you know, some of, some examples from the past, because I know we have a number of county commissioners who are probably not familiar with the comp planning that we did with the county in the past or even development of policies and regulations. But in the past, the way that it worked, we often did joint work sessions before we started a formal process. Often when we were doing, like developing the ordinances and it was moving through the formal process, we would actually bring it to the county before we brought it to the city council because we essentially wanted the codes to match. So if the county had an issue, we would tailor the language to the county's concerns and then bring it to the city council for their, their adoption. Again, just to have that consistency between the city and the impact area. And then lastly, I think the zoning map boundary. I think that's ultimately what you're going to be talking about here. I think it's important to note, you know, areas that are included would, would, we would need to look ahead to sort of figure out what would be the appropriate zoning designation in areas that would be taken out. Those are areas that would go back to unincorporated Valley County land use process that does not have zoning. So those are kind of some of the things to consider. Like I said, I think implementation is kind of the crux of all of this as it relates to McCall area. It might not be the issue in the other jurisdictions, but I, I do think this is a really unique area. And so ultimately, I think that from a city perspective as well as a county perspective, it would be important to get some clarity on that because we're going into budget season and we're about to start more long range planning processes and ultimately kind of have to figure out what we're doing. So that's all I have and I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Okay, so we're.
Megan, do you have the next slide?
So if I'm taking it from here on the questions, so the, we all have this as far as the, I think the key thing from the city standpoint was that we were trying to arrive at this not by way of opinions or anything other than trying to gather data. So without having any preconceived notions and where does the data got to get us? So I guess we probably want to be tying this meeting up with where we are going next. What questions, what else? Sherry, you obviously brought some good questions. Where, what other details do we need to utilize our staff to bring forward for this process?
I've asked a lot of questions as we go. If I could give you two a chance to ask some questions.
That's good, a few. And it's kind of in that tier, it's like the question as it relates to the, the data to get to a map. And then the administration are probably the two key factors of how we want to.
Yeah, so.
So what else can we get?
I, so I appreciate the map and your guys' work that you put in. I do know it was done in a timely manner. You know, I think on the north end, I think I struggle with it because I'm not sure that the code reads exactly how the state legislature may have wanted it, especially for public lands. So although I understand why we're, why you would like to expand the impact area up there because the code does say shall not divide any, I, I'm not sure that that was the intent when it came to public lands. Because those lands really don't follow the five criteria that are all needed. So I understand that that may be because that's what the code says, but I don't think that that was the intent. I do struggle on the south end. When, when you look at the five criteria, and I'm specifically looking at water and sewer, even in the current A O I, there's a big section down south that is not served by water and sewer. I don't foresee it happening within the next five years, much less the next 20. Or sorry, I don't see it happening in the next five years, maybe in the next 20. So I struggle with meeting the criteria on that. So I guess maybe that's a question for Ben, how you expected to increase that water and sewer down to extend to the south, even though it doesn't even. um, even though it doesn't even currently extend to the current, to the edge of the current AOI. And then on the east side, um, I guess I would wonder why we didn't decrease that, um, considering they're in a trust and probably don't fit the five criteria as well.
Which is that part, Calvin? The, that you're saying the east side that's in the trust?
Mm-hmm, Oaks.
Oaks. Oaks property, okay.
That's what I was questioning too, is that red hatched area, the Oaks property?
Yes, yeah.
They, they have a conservation easement on that. Nothing can ever be developed. They're my understanding of that, so. It's different.
Ben, can you clarify, was that added because those, because of the part of the statute that relates to not splitting parcels? Is that why that was?
Are we?
For clarity, that's why that was in there is because there's a parcel there that, so it's, we're not talking about the fact that there's an intent to provide water and sewer, for instance, to the Oaks parcel, but it's because that parcel crosses the boundary? Isn't that what's going on there?
And to clarify, we're talking about the red hatching above Little Payette Lake to the east or that small.
We're looking to the west of Little Payette Lake, the Blue Edge.
Yeah, so those were just included, um, to not split parcel lines. Um, if those parcels were taken out, that, that boundary would become a lot closer to current, uh, City of McCall boundary limits. Um, it was just added because, um, it has that moderate suitability. And so we kind of took that just on this first kind of da- data-driven a- area of impact. Um, just kind of high-level shot at it. Um, it would just seem that that should be included.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I understand the, you know, not, not splitting properties, but if the property has a conservation easement on it, it's not going to be, you just don't put it in first place. You don't split it, but you just remove it. I mean, the same thing on IDL lands. If you're barely touching it to the south, to me, that would mean that most of it is within the county currently. And so you would just remove that parcel. I don't think the statute says if you hit it, you have to accept the whole parcel. You decide if you're going to leave it in or you're going to leave it out, um, with the predominant ownership there, but I have to agree with Calvin on that. State land is so different. Um, I was contacted by Pandrosa State Park and said, absolutely, you know, we, we want to bring in the Kokoni Coke project, but the rest of it, we want to maintain state control. And that came directly from the governor's office, I think, so, um, a lot of conversation about that at a higher level than we are.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I mean, one, so you brought up a parcel that's in the conservation easement is not going to be developed and that, I mean, that might be true. Hopefully it's true. But one of the other criteria is geographic factors. And I think that's probably one of the, um, parts of the state statute that is most open, open to interpretation. And that's something that through the three of you are, will have to decide what you think it means. So, you know, in our model, we used geographic factors in looking at parcels around the lake and then the view shed. Um, so I think just because something isn't going to develop doesn't mean that there's not a justification or rationale for including it in the area of impact. I think if you look at the IDL lands, um, you're right there. So they're currently state land. They don't fall under, um, the city's jurisdiction, even if they are in the area of impact. But in the future, those lands, they may not be state land anymore. And I think there could be value to not just the city of McCall, but the community, um, in the area for having some sort of framework that, that is overlaid on those lands for when and if they do become privatized. So, I mean, I think that there are a lot of changes coming with respect to public lands and that we should think about those kinds of considerations as well.
And while I agree with that, I don't think whether it's city or county and whoever controls that, that there's not a framework for development there. I mean, the county has a framework for development also, so it doesn't mean either or. I mean, it's, we both have that. We can strengthen, um, both of them with, through those conversations if we would like. My concern is the black squares. I mean, we're creating enclaves that normally happens through development. And if you look at the Treasure Valley, those enclaves have been a major, um, pain to the, to the communities that they, they try and not create enclaves. And so here we are doing it on the front end. That's a concern to me, but.
Oh, we understand, Sherry, when you say enclaves, these areas that would be excluded that are currently in the area of impact, the block areas to the north. What do you mean by enclaves?
So, um, take the city of Star, city of Meridian. As growth went out into the county, there were people that did not want to be annexed in. So, they, they were surrounded by city. I think maybe some of those codes have changed. Once you're surrounded, then the city can't absorb you. But those in the, historically have been difficult to manage and deal with as development grew around them. So it's, you try and not create those. And we're doing it upfront with this app, so.
Yeah, and I think just, you know, again, for clarity, like what, what our staff tasked the consultants to do in doing this was they're going off of, they're not, they weren't making arbitrary decisions of, you know, well, this is this or that. They were just saying, well, is it, here's a parcel, it's within two miles and it has to be the whole thing based on statute. So they weren't making a subjective decision. They were just saying, here's a, here's what it is. So that's, so we kind of, we tasked our, our staff to bring back a data-driven approach so that we had something to work from and then subject to the.
Sure, this is all negotiation at this point.
Some, some, there's a conversation, but just that we want, we didn't want to, we did not want, we, we knew that we were clear that we did not want to start with, um, I think this would be good. Or it's purely out of public input. We take the public input in, but, but we wanted a data-driven approach to say, okay, here's, here's what we've got. It's all, it's all objective. And now we have something to go from. Like Neil said at the one meeting, well, we want a map. We just got you a lot of maps.
Yeah, I see that.
Be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Neil, what are your questions so far?
Yeah, so clarity on what our staff can provide for you guys is, I think, really important to us.
You know, I noticed you guys had an A and a B, but you guys were splitting half of what your A and B was going to be, uh, racing behind that.
Negotiation tool, did you not listen?
Yeah, I know, but it was.
I, I mean, A, if I, if I'm getting them right, A was just completely data-driven. B was, uh, going back to, I believe, our current impact area, but applying the state statute to not split parcels. That was the difference. And, uh, yeah, there was some discussion about that. And we decided for the start of our discussions that we would start with A, which was just the data-driven. We're not going to make any judgments about like, okay, well, you know, we're going to exclude this because it's not in our current impact area or we're going to exclude that even though it is in our current impact area, but it's this or that or whatever. So, that was sort of, you know, had, that, that was the difference between the two maps and that's why we decided to go with A. It's just, it's what the computer gave us.
That's fine. I was, I was curious about, um, going back to the state statute where they said, uh, that's five years to bring in a likely area into the city annexed it into the city. Have you guys discussed any of these areas at all? Is this, if I'm reading it right, that's what they're, they're pushing you to do within five years. Have you guys had this discussion or am I?
I think that was hard. I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the criteria, how far we.
Well, I know you've pushed the, the boundaries out, but are there areas inside your, your AOI that you're looking at to realistically bring it annexed it into the city? Have you guys had that discussion yet?
Well, is that something that you, from the staff level that you want to address?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think again, it goes back to this, the nature of annexation in Idaho, which is that it's primarily a voluntary process. So I think there are a lot of areas that we, would take a close look at if, if somebody was saying we want to annex because we want to get city water or have the city, well, the roads or whatever. I mean, I think, you know, the, the, um, the circumspect way to do annexation is to look at the costs and the benefits and make sure that it's a good financial decision for, for your city, first of all. Um, but again, I think that, that all of the areas that have been identified in the data-driven map are by the nature of the model areas that were identified as being su- suitable for annexation, basically. And that's, um, I don't know, I mean, maybe Bill, you want to say something else?
No, first, I think, I think you got it just right.
Sort of follow-up on that. I believe at the last meeting, you guys had intended to have a possible annexation map in June? Is that still the plan?
So I think that the, where we came down on that is that the annexation map is generally part of the comprehensive plan update process. And so we are starting the comprehensive plan update process. But, um, again, just because of the, all the different implications of the annexation, it's, um, an issue that requires a lot of public participation and public input and consultation. So we could come up with an annexation plan that, you know, would be something like this, essentially data-driven. But it, it would be, um, it wouldn't incorporate the, the public comment and input.
And that's the. But that we, we need when it comes to that part of the process.
And then, oh, no. One quick follow-up question. We just have been working on the Donlin, the Cascade A, AOI maps. And we actually had someone, um, ask us to be included in the Cascade AOI. Did anyone in this expanded AOI ask you to include them?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we haven't, I don't think we've heard a lot. Well, okay, so i- if you want to go look at what we've heard from the public, you know, we kind of put out a lot of feelers in advance of the March meeting. We got the comments that you've seen, the analysis that we did. I'm not going to say that's a scientific survey and I didn't match the, the responses with the parcel number to see where they are. Um, but I'm not aware of a lot of people saying one way or the other, we want to be in the impact area or we want to be out or we want to be annexed or I will never be annexed. Um, so I, I mean, you could, we could go out and find a mechanism to like force or, um, incentivize people to tell us what they want to do with their individual parcel. But it's going to be a lengthy, and I think it's, you know, it, it would be a lengthy process.
Well, it's a subs- it's a subsequent process to where we're at right now. We want to, we want to work with you guys to meet the, meet the statute for this year, then continue to work together towards where we're going in the future and, and as, assuming the statute holds for years to come, that we continue to follow it and we continue to work together towards where we go in the future and like, what we're doing there. But that does bring in the question of, you know, do people want to be annexed in? And we need, we haven't, we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten that far right now, but does that start next year? We have to, we have to get together.
I was just, uh, going back year come yet, back when I was talking about that, um, was the state expecting cities to do?
Cities to do in regard to this process?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, the statute makes very clear that counties and cities are to be partners in this. This is really the transitional zone between the city and the county. And, you know, that's what this process envisions, I think. And that's why, for example, in the statute, it, it includes a process for a city to petition, establishment modification or changes. Um, and the same for the county. The county can do that as well. And so, um, I think that there's mandatory involvement of both parties. And I, am I answering even your questions? Is that what you wanted? Yeah.
No, that's, that's where I was going, is get a little clarity of what the state was expecting by redoing their land use on this, what are the expected cities to do to grow into these AOIs? Because that's, that's why they were developed in the first place. And so that's where I was kind of questioning that.
Well, and one other comment, Commissioner, on that. It's very clear to me that the legislature wanted this to be a balancing act. To Commissioner Mopin's comment, is there an and there, right? Amongst the criteria. And there is an, an and amongst the criteria. And so that puts, you know, the city in the position of providing the county with the information that you need to balance all of these competing factors and determine, okay, what makes the most sense for a transitional zone between City of McCall and outright county? And, and so that's the balancing act, I think the legislature envisioned. Um, and, and you get to wear that hat.
And, you know.
And we need to modify, we need to modify because based upon the two mile, that two mile rule alone, some of these areas in black on the north, uh, the area of impact needs to be modified. Yeah, so we're presenting all the facts we have that we've gotten together to, that shows what the modification is suggested by that.
Man, you know, my only encouragement is if you can annex more into the city, you, you spread out your growth and you spread out your tax base. And every city needs that. You have to be able to grow the city and grow services. So that's, that's where Neil's at.
I'd like to make a, uh, attempt to answer to Kate's question. Do you hear people wanting to be annexed? And, uh, we do. I mean, one-on-one, people say, uh, well, our area seems ripe to me, but they're looking at the process. And the, the people who really ask are waiting for this to unfold. And they're savvy because they're property owners and they want to know. And so they'd like to know what is the administration process within the AOI? Uh, what are the key areas you're looking at to be annexed? So I'm saying, yes, people occasionally say something and I think they're expecting us to go to the comprehensive land plan, planning and to fulfill these meetings and engage in the public process. And they, then, then they will have a much more informed position on what they want for their property in their area. So that's, that hope that adds something to that. Go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, I was, yeah, for context, just a fun fact. Um, because I often hear this in meetings, people think the city of McCall has not grown. Um, there has been seventy-two annexations in the last seventy-five years. So if you look over time, you can start seeing where the city has, is moving in different directions. And I think this is an exercise to say, where do we think it's going to move? And because McCall area has done so much planning, the interesting thing to me, quite honestly, when we started this process, I didn't know what this boundary was going to look like. And I was very surprised that it was pretty darn close to the existing impact area. And it was also very close to our future land use plan map. Um, that shows, showed some contraction and some expansion. So, so somehow we got some things right in terms of our planning and predicting. Um, and, but I do think it's important just to have that perspective that the city has been growing over time. Um, and, you know, it's also interesting that we have all these different public service providers. You know, at one point in, in many jurisdictions, um, I think the city controls many more of this sort of public infrastructure pieces. Um, but I still think, like, even with this legislation, it really is about providing public service to the public and making sure that we're planning ahead. And, and that's what we do. We're planners.
And I agree with that. I mean, we do need to not look at our feet. We need to look at the long term. There does need to be a vision for people. So the process that we used with the other two cities, which we will also use with you guys on the nineteenth, and we would invite you all to come down to ten and listen to that process. We start at one o'clock. We actually take it and we state, does this meet the criteria set forth in Idaho Code? Anticipated commercial and residential growth. If you look at your growth map, if, right now, your city boundary ends at Cronling. Right? So you're looking clear down to Johnson in five years and have that annexed into the city. Because that's what the requirements are, you know. Areas where municipal public sewer and water are expected to be provided within the next five years. Right now, we have been told by the sewer district that they will not grow outside their boundaries until everything is fixed within, which is about a sixty million dollar upgrade. And so there is no expansion plan outside the existing footprint. Uh, I know that the city just has a bond, uh, for sixteen million dollars in upgrades. I don't know how much that upgrades the system. That would be something for us to know. Is that just for an upgrade to the treatment plant? Does that upgrade the lines that are needing to be upgraded? Because you, if you can't grow outside the city boundaries either, then sewer and water are not meant, either sewer or water. And it states, is it very likely to be annexed to the city? And it states, is it very likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years? That's my biggest question, you know? We have been contacted since our last meeting, a lot. Um, HOAs that are saying absolutely not, we are never coming into the city, and those stop your annexation to the north. I mean, there's very few annexation pathways past these subdivisions that are out there. They're kind of on the edge of town right now. So it is, if you have large tracts that are saying, no, I don't want to be annexed, then that shouldn't be part of our impact area moving forward. You're right, and A O I is anticipated growth boundaries for the city. I'm looking to the south and in listening to the meeting while while I loved your comment, where is housing going to go? Well, in this area, we are not going to have any affordable housing without density. I mean, it's got to be a high-density product. So going to the south, you are looking at acreage that's recently been subdivided into two to ten acre parcels. Um, owners split it up, twenty acre parcels, they have been subdivided, growth pattern is not going to be to the south with sewer and water anytime soon. So that area I'm concerned about that you, there is a growth pattern there. I mean, it may subdivide again someday, once sewer and water is there. But until that time, there's not a high-density area there that would create affordable housing at all. So, you know, we have to answer all of these things, and we have to give reasoned statements of why it does meet this or it does not meet this. The geographic factors, you know, we have the lake here, you guys are surrounding that lake. We have been asking, have not gotten yet, but we've been asking if this is not within the city, what are the codes and ordinances that you want strengthened? And so that we both feel comfortable that we're protecting the drinking water. The county has a process for development. Uh, we feel very strongly, we have a good process. We talked about B M Ps today and stormwater management today. So which areas do we need to strengthen in order to do that? It this is not an easy thing for you or us. It's not always the easiest being the last in the conversation, to have to make really important decisions for an area. That's really stressful. But it's incumbent upon us to list specific reasons why on all of this. Now, what are the good reasons? What are the, what's the pros and cons of these areas? A pro is immediately, somebody wants to be annexed in, please reach out. The gentleman in Cascade did. What are the larger parcels? Because in sewer right now, it's what, a million dollars a mile? At least, I mean, that's probably an old number. So if if a developer has to come in, they're not going to develop five acres. They're going to develop a hundred acres. Where are those hundred acre tracts in this area that would bring that into the city? And Michelle, you might be able to answer this for me. I'm I'm a little more familiar with development in the Church Valley than I am up here. But I don't remember ever an annexation occurring unless it was through development. And I think with the difficulty and Bill, you deal with all of that down there too, the difficulty that the state has placed upon a city to annex property. The most likely development. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what the most likely is. I mean, I think that's something that the county commissioners are going to have to wrestle with, and it's not even most likely, it's very likely. I do want to point out that inclusion in the area of city impact is not a precondition for annexation. That's something to keep in mind.
It's got to be contiguous, but I thought it had to be within an impact area.
Mm-hmm, that's not true.
Okay.
Sure, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So.
Will you kind of microphone to introduce yourself so that people in the room know who you are?
Jeff, we pit Lakes Water and Sewer District. So a few years ago, we did our master plan when we started this. Um, Lyle was in there, Michelle was in there. At that time, we all agreed to keep the district boundary where it was at. And that was the annex city system, city limits. Um, and that's what we stuck to. I'm not saying that it can't happen, but unless someone wants to give us forty million dollars to upgrade the 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 uh, collection system that we have. We've got one, one jade itch pond to hold all that flow. Um, we're getting that fixed. So we're we're still limited by what we have in in the in the infrastructure as it is, just that pond. So without another pond, at some point, we're going to be shut down regardless, even if we do expand. Because we have to have somewhere to store that water throughout the year. But um, I'm not saying it will never happen, but I do not see it taking place within the next five, ten years. You know, it's just, we just, that can't do it. You know, that pond right now takes dang near a third of its capacity just for infiltration. You know, we talked about planning ahead. Well, this whole area has missed the boat twenty years ago or more. Should have had look, all this stuff looked at a long time ago. Now we're stuck forty years behind the track. You know, it's, it's not good for any of us. And uh, we've got a long ways to go before we get it where it needs to be.
You bring up some good points, Sheri. I think what what we were, like what I said, we we were trying to come to a not us sitting around the table saying, what do you think about this? Or what do you think about this? Or how do, how do I think this meets this? Or what are the odds of this? Or can you pull your crystal ball out, Bob, and tell me what you think's going to happen here? We just wanted to get to a point where we have something to work with that is based upon data across the board by a third party that is not, there's no no opinion or anything like that. I might have an opinion or somebody else might, but it was just, let's get to a data-driven point so we have somewhere to start. And so that we can meet the requirement this year and give you guys something that you can work with that is defensible. I think that was a part of it too, was to give you something that you can say, if if your question on it is, here's where we started, and it was defensible. Because there was a lot of data brought into the mix, and that was that's, that's kind of what we wanted to do, to try to make it a little bit easier anyways, without it being I think this, or somebody else thinks this. And not holding it all to one criteria to say, well, is this going to get sewer or not? There are other factors in the mix.
And that was my question for Bill.
Yeah.
Is it and, or is it or? Does this get fixed and this, and this, and this, and this, or or? Because that gives two different um, interpretations of that law. So if we have to meet all of these, and by the way, the the two miles, and I kind of said this to staff too, when when I was meeting with them, but it isn't within two miles of existing city limits. It's if these factors happen, you can't go beyond two miles. So your planning area is two miles, you can plan all you want. An A O I doesn't matter all about your planning tools. I mean, I think it's appropriate to have planning tools in place anyway. Because, you know, if we do do something and it comes to you and and you want to give feedback on it, then you should have a plan in place for that. So I think that there are some finding tools of sense, but the other things have to be met. The last two are that will likely be annexed, and it cannot exceed two miles.
Can I clarify that real quick? And since you, since I, yeah, so what I meant was, when I said there's an and, is that they all have to be considered. That doesn't mean they all have to be met.
Uh, legal interpretation, because I think our legal counsel is interpreting that differently.
Well, look, it says, it says, um, in defining an initial area of impact or in modifying or confirming an existing area of impact their criteria set forth in this subsection shall be considered. Doesn't, it doesn't say shall be met. And then, and then you consider all of those. It doesn't mean you consider one and not the other. You consider them all. But they, you don't have to meet them all. So for example, to Jeff's point, sewer is a factor that you might consider. But you, there were twenty-four other factors that caused us, I mean, sure, we probably considered that as well when we created our map. But there were twenty-four other factors that also weighed on where that boundary should be. And that's what I meant when I said there's a balancing act that you get to wear.
And what we're. Next, section B. Section B, in addition to the criteria set forth, an area of impact shall not exceed the areas that are very likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years.
Uh, that's an accurate reading, and the question becomes, what is very likely? What does that mean, very likely? And that's, again, as I said, the legislature is asking the county to in engage your discretion, to engage, to weigh these factors, to make a determination on what does it mean for a parcel to be very likely to be annexed and why? And it's, that's required later on in the statute, you're required.
It loves your magnetic personality.
I guess, um, it it requires you to to develop a reasoned statement, similar to what you would do for land use. And so you do have to engage in a, in a weighing and deciding, and this is, we took this evidence in, and here, here's what we decided as a result.
You referenced that seventy-two items have been annexed into McCall within seventy-three years. Do you know approximately how many acres that is?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get that information for you. Yeah.
So now let's go, I'm looking for the exact verbiage, film me having front of him, but let's go to who's going to maintain and manage this area, the implementation phase of that. Also in statute, it says very specifically that this is to be in the county control and county ordinance.
As it is today. So the county ordinances are what apply in the area of city impact.
So way that they count, this is where I wish our legal team was here, and they are not unfortunately, but we'll be there on the nineteenth. So in going through the way that the current A O I is working, there was some evaluation done and a ways to improve that. And some of the recommendations would include holding executive sessions um, with some legal counsel for public hearings. County legal team would have to um, they would have to be included in all of the application distribution. County league will have to attend all the McCall area of planning zoning meetings. They would have to attend all the city council meetings. Anything to do with the impact area. There would need to be new policy. There are some other things that could work. But there's a lot of in the last five years, my six years as commissioner, there have been a lot of disagreements in the last few years on the way that the city is interpreting code and the way the county is interpreting code. And so I have concerns, and even though we have not been challenged in the court system yet, uh, the Supreme Court has been very active on land use in the last five years. And there's a reason behind that. And that's because there's not a meeting of the minds and there's not a lot of um, a lot, there's a lot of different interpretations of law. And our legal team right now is concerned that with some of the code that we have adopted from the city, that he has a different interpretation of that code. And we do have, even though they're working collaboratively together, there are different interpretations of that code. And so for me to sit here and say that there would not be a repeal of some of that would be an inaccurate statement. There will be repeal of some of the things that have been previously adopted. And after reading some recent columns in the newspaper, I'm sure we've all been reading on the sewer district, pretty positive, I know why there was such a large impact area. The county years ago, when all that sewer district started out, they just kind of went, you guys deal with it. We don't want to deal with this. So they've made a very large impact area there. Um, so as far as implementation, sitting on, sitting on the council, it has been very difficult. When we get an appeal, we have had very little conversation prior to that meeting. I know that that can be changed, but it's going to cost our taxpayers and the county another legal team or another lawyer on our legal team in order to do this work. In order to remain the way it is today. And we are going to have to discuss that.
I think that makes total sense. I mean, at some period of time, we've had a process in place that's working well. There's places, there's parts of it can be repealed or changed, and then there's going to be things that could be added, or taken away and added. But when you look at it in the long term of that process, what are we um, both committed to keep input, uh, what are we committed to, to um, make it easier to us, to us, to do in terms of building, development and land, land? And what is it that we would like to make it more difficult to do? For example, I think the county makes these clerks pretty difficult to build uh, in some of the watershed areas. Well, that, that's really important to us. The lake can't take much more of that. So when we look and say, what do you want to add? What do you want to take away? I think, you know, there's been so much changes in the last ten years here. We, we would understand that. The, I mean, that's more like between staff and 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 all that that's down in the weeds to me in terms of what I know about ordinance and and land management. But I I ha- I would have confidence that that can be done. Probably within the, a similar framework, the same framework we're working in, in now.
So I know that short-term rentals need to come under county code, because you guys don't have the ability to work outside your footprint on short-term rentals. So that's a whole different process for anything that's a short-term rental. Event venues also have to come under county code. So really, the county code, the way that is, that the county has written this code, has to be on that footprint other than land use. So if I'm living within that impact area, is there confusion? Because those people vote for camp, for commissioners, they don't vote for city council. Is there representation there? For the people that live within that area? I think that I would like to hear from those individuals that live in the area. The letter went out last time to everyone that lived in McCall and surrounding areas, I think. And we had a lot of information from people that didn't have anything to do with the impact area. I want to hear from people that live in the impact area. What do you want? Do you want to remain in the area of impact? You want to be excluded? What is it that you want? So we'd ask that, you know, let us know. If you live in the impact area, you're actually impacted by it.
Part of that question that you're asking is, um, do you want to live in the impact area governed by the city or governed by cannabis? That's, that's more a complete question to be asked. Because that's, I get that asked quite often.
So I think from our, our perspective, um, what, what we would like is to know where we're at, even as it relates to budgeting and these planning. And and you bring up a lot of points that I think our city staff has been delving into and looking, okay, let's address this, let's address this, let's work together to address these things. I think for our standpoint, and we appreciate the time, is in the conversation is to say we didn't want to come to you and say, here's what we have to have. We take input, we've taken input from the community, and we've tabulated, and you bring up a great point of well, there's clearly some more information that we need to gather related to annexation, questions related to um, being within the area of impact specifically versus people that have feelings about it or have concerns about it that might live in the city, but are concerned about how things develop outside, all of those questions. But what we want from you guys in our partnership and working together is we have what I think are some very, very good staff and that can gather information and put things together so that we can make sure that we have the best operating area of impact for all of the concerns that you guys hear and bring up, and same thing from our standpoint. And so that's what we're trying to get to. And I don't know, or we aren't sure that it's something that we can accomplish all of those things right now. We kind of like to say, okay, here's what we need to do to meet by the end of the year. And then we want to be able to keep looking at it, adjusting it, and you say, and, you know, we, if we can put something in, even if it was just leaving everything as it was, minus these couple ones that um, do not fit within that two-mile uh, notation in the statute, but that we can then move forward, we can say, okay, now let's start the public outreach on this. Let's start public outreach on this and then reevaluate next year. I think that's kind of, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know, or Colby. I think that's where we've been kind of coming from, is we want to get to a point right now that we have some predictability that that we're working together, that we're providing the data on the side of the city, and that we can have an understanding within a reasonable amount of time, who's going to be administering it and where the budgeting needs to be.
I think that we could have a lot more clarity on the nineteenth on that one, but um, some of the things that I would like to know. Now, how many number of lots are currently available in the city? So what does your in growth look like? That have not been built on, clarify that, you know, how does the brand conversations with the county planner on, on any development that's close to the city? You know, larger parcels that people are looking at, we're gonna go ahead and try and develop in the county when really it should be in the city. Even though it might cost them a bit to get into the city sewer and water. Conversations with the adjacent landowners wanting to remain in the AOI or be annexed. I think that's a huge part of the conversation. What are the annexation pathways? I think we should be able to look at that and state, you know, if we're gonna go north, what are those annexation pathways? Lot of the northern part has already been established and built on. And so if you're looking at that, those people are not gonna ask for them into the, the city. What is the carrot? Development is always the carrot because you want city water and sewer. They already have it. So that's what we have to take into account too. What is the reality? What is the realistic vision for the city of McCall to grow? Where's your growth path? And that's really what we're asking for. It's not. You know, we, we can start with this large from map. I actually ask you to start small so we could add to it. That's not what we got. So, but I mean, how many people really want to stay in that AOI and where are the growth paths? Unfortunately, the DeBoer property, when it was sold, um, I think we all talked to Judd and asked him not to do that. That was your pathway to. To growth in the south. I don't know that it's still there. So where is your pathway? West Mountain Road, is it, you know, to the east? Where are those pathways for growth? Because that's truly what an AOI is. It's where are you gonna grow in the future? But you're not gonna absorb the stuff to the north. I, I don't see it. So prove me wrong. I guess that's what I'm asking. Prove me wrong enough. Where are some annexation pathways? Who, who up there wants to be annexed that's close to the city?
Who today and who in the future may want to. But again, there's all of, so I guess the question as we share, because you're bringing up good questions and a good list is that. And Forrest has been making good notes as far as addressing these is. Anything that we can provide for you guys and how we can help simplify it. And I appreciate you saying, well, if you gave us a smaller map and let us add to it. We didn't come into this with the idea that we're gonna give you a map that's smaller or bigger. We just said, here's all the data, dig into it and. Take a dab driven approach so that we have something to work with. And I think as Bill said, that, you know, now you have some work to, because you guys are the decision makers on this. But we want to be trying to make it easy and we want to keep. Moving forward with you guys on this.
Sure.
So I guess if there's other things that we can provide, then we want to provide those. And if there's an opportunity that we can work with you and look at this as not something that. Is a one time deal. I think that's really important to us because we don't know, we don't know what's gonna happen in five years. What if, what if the state does so? Some of the parcels that are to the northeast. What if they, you know, we, we don't know how that's. Kind of, so we don't, we don't necessarily know the future, but we do know that change exists and it's always gonna exist and that we want to be able to be adaptable to it. And we want to be looking all of it. Yeah, we want to be looking down, downstream and looking towards the, the future and. Making sure that we're also doing what's, what our community as a whole wants.
Sure.
So I, and I know that's where you come from and I know that's where you guys are, you know? So that's, that's what we're getting at is, is how do we give you guys enough information to make it so that you have a defensible reason for. Putting a, a map in and so that we have an agreement on who's gonna manage it. And that we can move forward in that way and that we can look at this and whether it's a once a year revisiting so that we can come to something by the end of the year. Or whether it's, do we get through five years and we get to the end of that and we say, okay, now let's see where we're at.
And I think each year will be a milestone toward the future. I mean, this is, it's a, it's an evolution. We don't know what's gonna happen, but. I honestly think this was put in place in the legislature to make cities and counties talk. Because they haven't done that well in the past. And a lot of lawsuits flying around out there that just were negated when this happened. So I think it's imperative that we continue to talk. And plan together. Regional planning, I've always been a regional planner. I think it's really important that we look. Larger than just any given city and what's happening around you. And. Yes, I think it, it needs to be an ongoing conversation.
And not, probably not, I, I'd say five years, but I don't, I don't think that in speaking for our community or speaking. At least for city council and that is that. I think that our anticipation and hope is that this is an ongoing discussion every year that we are revisiting and that we can have a starting point. That um, that we can start where we're at without. You know, making dramatic changes and that we can kind of, that we can keep moving forward and then we can look at these questions because your list of questions is. Really good and. And that's how we, that's how we would like to proceed.
Sure.
Can I ask a question about outreach? One of the points you mentioned was information about. Adjacent parcels who want to be in the area of impact, I guess. I mean, if you're gonna have your meeting on the nineteenth. I don't think that's something we can. Get by then. Do you have a timeframe in mind or how would we, would you want to work together? To get that outreach piece or what are your thoughts?
Well, they'll all be known in types of the public hearings. So like, if you have the opportunity to come speak.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not that big a deal really. Us down the road for these guys. I don't think that's so much for us.
Your, your meeting on the nineteenth is at work.
It's a precision. It's to take this and start answering all of these questions and come up with some. Come back and say, this is the questions that we have, you know? But at some point in time, we do need to have a public hearing and hear from people. And, and right now, we can let people know, please email us. If, if you want to remain in that impact area or if you specifically want to be out, if you want to remain, which of the ordinances do you want to remain under? The map will change. I mean, I think that's a given. And I think that as we make changes, again, this is a five year planning tool all the time. With the eye on a longer term vision for the area. But I, I just really feel like there's this. That McCall doesn't control it or have that vision that it's not gonna be something good. And I disagree with that whole heart of it. I think the county has got good planning tools in place also. We just need to reiterate that to the public. I think that we're a little concerned about some things on the water that. They either agree with it or didn't disagree with, so. I want to thank all of you. It's five o'clock. We've been here two hours. It always time goes fast. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the map. Thank you for all of our hard work. Boginson spends a great. Planning company, you know, we worked with them during the ADC process. They were great to work with then. Let us know what, what, we can help bands are also in the next couple of weeks, but yeah, we do have that workshop on the nineteenth, I'd please. Back to us.
Well, thanks for your desire to continue to work together and. Thank you for everybody that came and everybody that came and listened and for all of those that have um participated to help put this work together. Do. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Brain.
Yeah, it's a lot. A lot of data.
I have a lot of family.
Hard questions.
I have a lot of family health issues.